I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Fall River School Committee, Wednesday, May 27th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to be acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens' input tonight? Approval of contracts.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. Hart.
I'll second it, but I do have a question on one.
Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
I just, I think these are all obviously very important contracts, and these are, as far as I know, they're one-time money, correct?
Yes, we're using end-of-the-year money, FY20. It doesn't impact the FY21 budget.
And then, I just need to ask a question about the Pilgrims Advocate Center of Crystal County. Is someone there to talk about that, or no?
We can answer questions that you may have.
Well, I just want to know, do they deal specifically with, if I think I'm right, abused children within our school district?
So, it's abused children, physical, sexual, social, emotional abuse. They do a great job of being the point advocacy group and dealing with our SEL staff and the police at times, and other state agencies.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was noted, duly noted. I mean, I think the amount could be higher, but I understand that, but we're all in a very tough, you know, situation here with the pandemic virus going on. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna prove everything. I just think that that might be, maybe next budget could be a larger figure. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll provide a report to the committee as we do, as to quality of the services throughout the year, so you can assess that.
Mr. Corey?
That's fine, Superintendent. Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Dr. Malone, I just want to wrap my head around some of the contracts. Now, I know you just explained that it's coming off of this year's budget for next year. What about if school isn't reopened on September and such? Are things prorated, or?
So, we would, we would work all that out with the provider, given that it seems to be the normal practice with a whole host, so we'd write that into our work plan. One of the things, because of the unknown, so I'll give you an example, like coaching for change, if schools close, isn't working, but the CAC with school closed is still doing services. So, it's a mixture. It can't be one size fits all for us, but to answer your question, the answer is yes, that we would use the authority that we have to stop payment in times of lack of service.
Thank you very much, Ayeel.
Anything further? We have, on sight, Kev, go ahead.
Yes, Dr. Malone, just looking at, and I agree with what you just said about the time of CACs, actually, they aren't going to increase the need for that service, but I noticed that they're below all of the other contracts. Is it possible that we could just bump them up to the 40,000, which is, then they'd be the second lowest, like, at least so that they're not out on an island? These are providers in the community that are, are all doing great work, but I see the next one up from them is 40,000 for Packer?
That's the youth court.
Would that be something that is palatable?
If the committee can do, wants to do that, we have that in our means. Remember, it's this year's money unexpended from grants, which doesn't impact next year. That's the most important piece, so we're not hurting ourselves by approving that. If the committee wants to make that 40 grand, that's their decision.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? On Kevin's amendment?
Bump it to 40.
To move the CAC amount to $40,000. Any further discussion? Deb, on Kevin's amendment, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any further discussion on all contracts? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Abstain.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Abstain.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, discussion and vote to approve a solicitation of the special education yellow bus transportation IFP 20-35 as presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Any questions for Mr. Pacheco?
You're going to present?
Go ahead, Ken.
So, you have in your packet the bid specs with corrections in there for any kind of contradictions. We had found a couple in the last spec. Those have been corrected, and the document is as it is. I also had Ms. Cabral send to all the members a, an opportunity to look at some changes to entice people to bid, to obviously gather more contractors bidding on this, on this particular contract, in hopes that the prices will, will be less than it was at the last time. So, it's kind of an alacott menu. It can be accepted as a whole, or it can be accepted piece by piece, whatever, whatever the committee so chooses. It'll answer some of our issues. Each one of the things that we changed also has a safeguard for the district, so we didn't put ourselves in a situation where we're allowing someone to walk in with, with a certain criteria, less than the last bid, but we are checking them with other items, so to speak. So, one of the items was the minimum of contracts with 10 buses. What we're saying is, is that when you bid on the, on the particular, this particular IFB, that within 10 days, you need to show us the equipment you have under contract, under agreement with the bus company, that you're buying these particular pieces, that you have enough vehicles to service us. And that happens throughout the contract, so we're not stopping anybody from bidding on, on the IFB, however, there are some criteria. We also are looking for three contracts. Last time, we were all looking for three current contracts. We're looking for three contracts in total, that this person has had with satisfactory reviews on those contracts.
Make a motion to approve with the possible relaxed bid language that was sent as well.
Second.
Second.
Basically, I want to, the new relaxed bidding, I want to approve the old and this relaxed bidding as well, all in one, basically what Mr. Pacheco just indicated.
Okay. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, then we'll go to Tommy. Go ahead, Tom.
Ken, could you just give me a very brief synopsis as to, we're close to signing a whole new contract with all our transportation companies. Is that correct?
Right, so three of the four contracts have been approved by this board and are moving to the city council on June 8th for the approval of the five-year portion of the contract.
Yeah.
After that, we will have those contracts locked in, and it'll only remain, only one will be remaining, which is this one here. The idea is, is that if, if this goes through tonight, what we will do is put this on the street and hopefully have bidders within the next three weeks, open these bids as quickly as we can, evaluate them, and come back to you. We won't make the June 11th meeting, obviously, but we're hoping that if, if possible, we may hold another special meeting, if it so chooses the committee, to have this done in the month of June. If we cannot, it'll go into the July meeting.
That's fine, that's good. So, I'm, I'm very happy with, with the structure of all of this. Five years locks us into, you know, our partners in transportation, and that's going to give us a great relationship with these companies, which is great. What I'm concerned of is, given the situation we're in now with a pandemic and performance-based contracts, so I want to make sure that we're going to cover our backs in the future, given the level of performance that's performed or not. Is that going to be the case?
Yes.
That's all I care about with that, Ayeel, this chair.
Anything, anything further on the contracts with the amended language? I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next item is a discussion and vote to approve a one-year contract extension for Witsen's New England.
I'll accept.
As presented by Ken Pacheco and Chief Operating Officer, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions of Mr. Pacheco, or you want to explain it, what we're talking about here, Kenny?
Sure, so, it's a, we went out to bid last year for the Witsen's contract, we awarded it, for the food service contract, we awarded it to Witsen's. The first year was part of that initial award, and each year after that, we come in for an amendment. The amendment states the original agreement, and it also gives us the, what the increase is based on the Consumer Price Index. That's how they increase from one year to the other, and there are two amendments total this year, and then they would be looking for a second amendment next year, which, which would make their three-year contract.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
You said it's just money, the amendment, it wasn't other stuff?
No, no. The amendment is strictly based on, on the agreement that the price index would increase the services, prices.
In essence, they got a three-year contract. It's not like we're doing a one-year contract.
It's, it's an amendment, but we have to do this each year, and that amendment has to be approved by the state. So, you have a letter in there from the state, from DSC, that would approve each one of these before you-
Yeah, the only reason I'm saying is, there's no way for us to, because it went out to bid, we can't give them a further contract.
It's three years.
This is basically the best we can give them.
Yes, yes.
With that, Ayeel, thanks.
Mark?
Can I just ask a question for you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Pacheco? Is this an extension or a modification of the existing contract?
It's, it's basically a one-year amendment, and the amendment piece is just the dollars. The rest of the contract remains the same.
It's a modification.
Exactly.
So, it's not, it's not an extension, we're just modifying the contract we have in place to, to reflect the increase in the consumer price data?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, Ayeel, thank you.
Anything further? I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Next item on the agenda is a discussion, 2020 curriculum and instruction, ELA, math, science, and social studies, the remote learning plan, as presented by Maria Ponce, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. So, in your packets, you received proposals for new curriculum that a team led by the Office of Instruction, Curriculum Leads, different teams were engaged in exploration of and selection of new curriculum materials. We are looking to purchase an early literacy, K to 2, new program, science for grades six through eight, and secondary mathematics, six through eight, in addition to Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II at the high school. As a district, providing our teachers, as you know, with the right resources that are current and aligned, which is one of the issues that we've had, has always been an issue, so we want to, our goal is always to close the achievement gap, and the leads embarked on this journey exploring new resources. It was inclusive, they included teachers, administrators, the curriculum leads, the leads at schools, in researching different material resources, and surveying, and taking a vote at the end for their final selection. We know that COVID-19 is wreaking havoc on all of our budgets. Certainly, we were in a better place when we embarked on this journey. We know that we were planning on using SOA funds to support this adoption, and we certainly are ready to adjust accordingly. But the plan was to bring the findings to the committee now, so that it could be moved to June for hopefully adoption. So, we thought the respectful thing to do would be for all the work that the committee has embarked on, to bring it to culmination, to submit their recommendations, and to ask you to, to consider funding these new programs.
Discussion, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm only in favor of what I'm seeing in front of me here. The only thing I wanted, and I don't know if this is in the peer view of Assistant Superintendent Fons, or anyone, or maybe Superintendent, but have we started to consider, with this pandemic, if, if everything is continuing, and we're not going to get any look at, you know, we're going to follow the state guidelines up until the beginning of the new school year, have we considered how, what we're going to do in terms of remote learning in the beginning of the next school year, regards to how do we social distance children in a school bus? How do we social distance children in the cafeterias? And I just want to make sure that we're, we're beginning to start that kind of planning, although it might not be needed, I just wanted to make sure we're thinking about that.
So, great, great question, Mr. Hart. So, so I think we've been, we've been blessed in Fall River that we've stayed focused on each phase and not-
Right.
Not went, because it can, it can literally drive you into a rabbit hole, if a wormhole, if you will. We've stayed within each phase.
Right.
So, we're staying in Phase 3 right now on June 22nd, when we move to Phase 4, which is summer. We have a task force with labor unions around reopening that will convene, and today, we had a conversation with the commissioner and all the superintendents in their task force for reopening, which is going to release guidance. They won't release their guidance until late June. And ironically, Ed Davis, the former police commissioner in Boston during the Marathon bombing, he's chairing this blue ribbon panel on school, school opening, and we're going to get guidance, and then we'll work throughout the summer with you, with Tess, with all of the city, you know, partners around what school opening will look like. There's so many unknowns and what-ifs right now, that-
Absolutely.
I don't want to, I can't, you know, you and I could sit here for two hours and debate what happens on buses, but at the end of the day, we, you know, we're still not, we, we don't know yet when we'll open. Let me put it to you that way. And when we do open, school will look very different, and it can be as, you know, the best way to think about next year, especially the fall, is a blended model with in-person and remote engagement for students. So, we'll be ready, we'll be prepared, we're going to, Phase 4 for the summer will include remote learning content, so we're going to teach children this summer to close achievement gaps and all the things that we need to do, the curriculum content, which is the, you know, the, the most important stuff, the what that students are learning. And through our entire learning and teaching improvement strategy, which we've been working on for several years to close those achievement gaps, we're looking at this summer as just, not a summer in a traditional sense of summer off, but continued remote learning for all families. We're going to make that available to all families this summer. We can't mandate that all families do that, although we will have students in summer school remotely as well. So, it, again, it's, it's a team effort. I think that Maria Ponce and her team has done a great job, Tracy Curly, the curriculum leads, I see folks here, English, math, and science, our special educators, and our SEL staff, and ELL folks, are all really focused on having robust curriculum that teachers can use. And what I mean by that is real tangible materials that teachers can use, so that we have coherence across the district, and we're able, so that, you know, math at Fonsica in second grade is the same math that's happening at Sylvia in second grade, in terms of the standards and how we deliver it. And that is really what we've been working on, and, you know, we know, so, you know, whether or not we're in a pandemic right now, whether or not we're in this pandemic, we were still coming forward tonight to share where we are with the curriculum rollout. Now, our original SOA plan allowed us to purchase all this essentially across two years. We know we're not going to be able to do that, but what we'd like to do is come back to the committee in June with a very small recommendation for some small purchases that we can do in math and science at least, so that we can get those materials in the teachers' hands as we start the next phases of learning. So, tonight is to share, next school committee meeting will come forward, proposal using FY20 money, again, not FY21, but using money that we have, so that we could pre-purchase some materials, and then we take that off the books for next year, that opens up opportunities for us. So, tonight, we're going to answer questions, and then next week, I mean, next month, yeah, two weeks from now, we'll come back with a request.
I, I, before I go- Assistant Superintendent, I absolutely agree with you. I think that, and I know that you're planning ahead, ahead of that, and I know you are, and I know all your team is doing a good job, and I think that we also have to look at, making sure that, if at all possible, if this doesn't, if we don't, we have to continue remote learning, that we have to, I know you're doing this, that we make sure that we have the proper equipment for the children, but also too, and this is just throwing a question out there, that we make sure that if we, if at all possible, the children, the families that don't have network capability, that we might provide that. I don't know if we can do that, but that's something that we discuss for the future. I agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I got a couple of quick questions before I go to Tommy. The students that we're giving Chromebooks to, are they keeping them all summer?
Yes.
Yes.
We're collecting them from the seniors, obviously, if we gave any-
We didn't give them to seniors.
We didn't give them to seniors, okay. Summer school, I was going to ask you about, is there going to be any in-person summer school, or will it all be virtually?
Well, we don't know yet if we're able to, if we're going to be able to do in-person. We're waiting for guidance on that, but we, what we need to do is have a plan of, we're really talking about two different summer pieces, components. We need to have targeted summer school for students who need support, and we also need to make learning available for students who, to keep that learning. We know they've been out of school for a long time, so, which is why we're letting them keep the Chromebooks, but as of yet, we have not determined whether we're going to be able to have in-person summer school.
Because, that like, the number one complaint I get from parents is the amount of focus it takes to just do your lessons with your students, and if you have multiple kids in the house, you pull away for a little bit, that one's over there on Nintendo, and this one's got to be drawn back. It's a real struggle, and it's a real struggle everywhere in the state.
So, we were told, Mayor, that-
What are you doing, Mimi? You cracking up?
No, no answers yet.
Nintendo.
Wait, I know.
What's he doing?
All right, let's all have a laugh about that. Good job, Mimi, that's funny. Oh, you used Nintendo, it's like saying Envision or Atari.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, let's get back on track here, hold on.
All right.
Mr. Corey, we're going to stay with-
Can I just finish my point, Mayor?
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, today with the, with the conversation, the conversation was, plan your summer around remote, but if the regs change, or the relax, and we can do things face-to-face, we'll likely do both models.
Okay, let's journey back to the future with Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ponce, I can see you guys have a really solid plan here on paper. I could see you sweating the details, trying to set up for the future, and here we are in this pandemic with all this uncertainty swirling around. I see the DIBELS scores here, you know, I know that, I know how important DIBELS are, and I'm seeing that our scores, nearly 50% of our students don't have those early literacy skills, and I know you guys are trying to bulk that part of it all up, K through 2, which is crucial. So, my question is, is before the pandemic hit, and we had the student opportunity money in the fall, we were talking about pre-K and the expansion of pre-K, which would support this early literacy. What's the status, is, is that in the tank, or?
So, the answer is no, we're, we're progressing with, now remember, year one of the rollout, which is part of the longer-term strategy of the school committee and the mayor, when we think about early childhood. Year one of the rollout was to convert the half-day programs to full day, so it doesn't require additional classrooms, because we don't have the space, so we can roll out that in year one, given, once we figure out and know more what the budget is. But what follows in terms of new spaces and more classrooms, that's still all up in the air. But, you know, we're committed to it, and we know at some point, we're going to come out of this. So, if it's not FY21, it's going to be FY22, and all that work that we did in the SOA is going to come to fruition. And imagine if we got two years' growth of the, you know, the point, 7% each year across the seven-year implementation. So, we're going to be able to do more rollout. The goal is still more seats for four-year-olds.
Yeah, I'm not looking for definites, but that, that's really good to hear, that at least it's still a concept we're going to work toward, you know, and I think, in the long run, if we continue to develop the pre-K thing, which is really, it's kind of a trend in a lot of places now, and I know the chamber, the local chamber commerce is 130% behind this. They want to see pre-K flourish in our schools, and I think it's a great way to try to improve early literacy programs that you guys are designing on paper. So, I don't know, what are your thoughts on that, Maria?
Well, it's, I mean, I think that early literacy, we have to start them young. Our kids come with a lot of deficits already, so preschool is only going to help us to close some of those gaps. Many of our kids are coming into kindergarten without the vocab needed, without the skills needed, so pre-K is, is going to be one of the benefits that will help us move forward, without a doubt.
Right. Okay, with that, Ayeel, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Agia?
A couple of comments and questions. Thank you for the work. This seems like a lot of hours went into this planning. My question would be on the six-year, assuming we had all the money, we're going to go over six years. Do these agencies, or can you check with them and possibly see, Superintendent said, we're going to get money at some point in the next couple of years. I think logically, we're going to have, in my opinion, let's say, three years from now, more money than we know what to do with and spend money on. This is valid stuff. Is there a way to negotiate a contract with these individuals to say, we don't pay anything for the first two years, pay, like, backload it instead of front-load it would be a good suggestion?
Right, so that's what we're working on, is a phased plan, it's where we come back, and so, we pay a little bit of money upfront, and longer money in the out years, but we, we know for sure, though, even, no matter what, we're not going to be able to get as much as we wanted in the first year, because if you see the number, the cost in literacy is, is, is a lot, and we think we can make a dent in math and science in the first year, so we may do a phased approach. But, you know, the answer, or to comment on what Mr. Corey also just said, you can see also, this includes the information on the early literacy program that when Mayor Coogan was on the school committee, he was championing the early literacy, what we call foundations, or, that's all in- foundations, that's all included in this, that rollout as well. So I think that, to answer your question, I don't have a definitive, I can make it happen, but that's what we're working on.
Yeah, I think if they know they're going to get their money, in the end, it's worth at least bringing it up.
If I may add, we are already speaking to the vendors to see if there's any way that we can stretch it out.
The, as far as the remote learning, I'm assuming we're taking both of those bullets together. Can we just get updated numbers at some point, based on what Mr. Hart was saying about how many people are connected, how many, you know, we got the devices in the hands, step one, step two is to help with the connectivity. If we can get updated numbers on those type of things system-wide, I'd appreciate it.
So we're working on the next phase of a mini-report to the school committee around connectivity, and, you know, the reality is, we're able to monitor who's doing what now, and it peaks and valleys, and it's, this is the real challenge with remote learning, is that it's never 100%, and it's not as high as we want it to be. So with that, I'll have something probably, if not, probably within two weeks.
Yep, the, along with that same line, the, I probably should know this, but the achievement network that we're using now across, does that provide the lesson for the student, or is there, you know, tells the teacher sort of what they should be teaching, could teach, different opportunities?
ANET is an assessment platform that we're using across the district. There's also a coaching piece that goes along with that contract, where they're embedded in schools, supporting, coaching the coaches, department heads, working with the content leads, as well as providing support in PLC, analyzing data, and then coaching teachers in how to adjust instruction. But it's the platform, the common assessment platform that we adopted.
Yep, so, and you might be already working, I'm sure you are, but what kind of online, a more intensive online, let's say we had to do more instruction online, what are we ready to do, I'm sure we're looking at it, but I think the committee would be, feel better if we knew, it's hard right now to do this the first time, but now, after six months of doing this, if we had to come back in September, easing people's minds, I think, would be, whatever, we could look at an actual platform or program that actually helps.
Great question, Ms. Ayer. So today, we started the day with a conversation around, if we move to a full online platform, how do we beta-test it now, design it? So I have our best minds, which is people that you know and love, Frank, our curriculum people, Scott, Ryan, folks, figuring out how we could, and it'd be a little cost, but it wouldn't be much, to do a full online platform, which I think we need to be prepared for anyway, because let's say we start, everything's great, and then November falls through. So we're going to move down that road of having a follow-up platform concurrent, because all the superintendents are saying to the state, hey, state, you need to develop one that we can all use. I think that is ongoing, but to get to the, what I think is the crux, so if we went full online, how does ANET still provide services? There'll be the assessment part of our online platform. So all the formative and summative assessments, which is the project, the monitoring, progress monitoring, and the summative end-of-unit assessments, they, we would be using their tools, so we don't have to reinvent that part of it, which would be a good thing. So the ANET partnership, I think, no matter which way we go, is really a strong one for us in terms of the delivery of services.
And they must have familiarity with other, they're going to be part of the discussion, I'm sure, to see what works well in the field and all that stuff.
Yeah, and they're working nationally, so they're using, doing this in all 50 states, pretty much.
And they meet with us regularly, and they meet with our leadership team, and where, that's exactly what we're doing, lessons learned, learning from one another. I think that's a valid point. If you look at the remote learning plan, you'll see that what it does is captures our growth and our learning, right? We, you know, I agree, we weren't prepared for something, we didn't think it was going to be an extensive shutdown. We adjusted each time with each phase, we got better at it. What this is going to do, it captures where we are, and we're going to learn from this and say, how do we develop a better model moving forward if we are at that point?
My last question is, when does the Verizon start, the Verizon grant?
It's already started in terms of all the training, so we're ongoing with the training. They've had several sessions in the last couple of weeks, and then the rollout of the actual devices will be September, when we start.
And that's going to get half the schools, half the kids are going to have automatic access, correct?
No, all middle schools, as well as the middle, Henry Lord, as well as Doran, all of our student schools, yeah, a device.
That's what I'm saying, but the other half, like, so, I'm adding this to the conversation that we just had about getting the list of who has connectivity and who doesn't.
Yeah.
So now we can focus our attention on those that are not going to be part of the Verizon grant, so we can...
Exactly. This will be three, a third of the kids will get automatic connectivity with this grant.
Right, and then we can use our resources for the others.
And they've expedited, so our kids are actually going to have their Chromebooks earlier than, typically, they would, we would have to do digital citizenship lessons, et cetera, and they would, we would distribute Chromebooks to our kids in October or early November. They have agreed to allow us to distribute them the first week of school so that our kids can start working.
Yeah, that's very good. Keep up the good work, thank you very much.
I'm going to go to Mark, then Tommy. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, I couldn't agree with you more about the bright minds we have in our district, and to that point, I would say that let's move forward to what our online platform, let's not be waiting for destiny to create one for us. We know what happens sometimes when you leap our fate through state agencies, and so I think we have bright minds here, we're putting our line platform together, because as Hart has indicated, the reality is we weren't prepared, no one was prepared. And so let's learn from that, and let's not find ourselves in a situation, again, come September or October, November, where if we have to go back to remote learning or to learning outside of our classrooms, we're ready for that, and that our students will be left behind, and we're not scrambling to put something together at that point. So I'm certainly interested in hearing more as the group meets, but I would say, let's aim to be prepared, no later than the end of August, for an online platform situation in the event we don't go back.
So, great question, or great comment, Mr. Costa, we agree wholeheartedly, just, I just want to put one more caveat. I want you to imagine, so we, let's say we come back on September 1, and there are hundreds of parents that say, I'm not sending my kid. We have to be prepared for that. So no matter what, we're going to have a remote learning platform component, and whatever happens next year. But you're right about, like, we got some real gunners, right? People that just kick butt in everything that they do in the system. So if we can hothouse an R and D and basically get a beta model set up that we flip the switch and go live with, on, that would be ideal. And then we always know, hey, you know, like, think about it this way, Mark, you know, the old days of a snow day not counting are over, right? Because I have, you know, we have, say we get back to normal, we call it a snow day, hey, it's a day of learning because we have an online platform. So either way, we're going to do this, it'll be a small cost because we got to build the infrastructure, the architecture, we'll come back to the committee and let them know about those kinds of things because we'll get approval, but we think we're going to be able to do this on our own at a minimum cost with the quality product.
Well, let's get after it. Like you said, we have some top-quality people in our district. I have a lot of confidence that we'll be able to pull it off. I think we need to be ready. There's no excuse, if September runs around, rolls down, and we're not ready, or if we have to go back to a situation that we're currently in now, we are students need to stay home, and we don't have that ability to educate them on an online platform, shame on us. So with that, I yield, thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you guys have been really sweating the details on remote learning, and society's moving in that direction. I agree with everything that you guys are thinking of moving forward. You know, we have to think about remote learning as being an integral part of a child's education now. So my question, Dr. Malone, is, it's a hypothetical question, it's just I'm thinking out of the box here, and I'm wondering about those kids who lack connectivity, if they don't have subscription service in their household, what are we going to do with that population of our students?
So we're going to take care of a third of them with the Verizon rollout at the middle level, and then we're working with Comcast, the mayor's office and his team on the possibility of Comcast doing more. The state's got a big role in this, is they're trying to figure that out, too. I think the Globe article last week that said, in Boston, it's one in five students that hasn't engaged at all.
Yeah, 20%.
Right, right, so, and we're probably around that same average. I mean, so that's the reality with, in terms of the actual online. Now, we've engaged, and we've shown the data, I think it's 90, at least 97% of kids that we've been, at least been able to contact, right? But it's that daily connectivity that is the one-in-five figure. We think that, worst-case scenario, and I, you know, I hope it's not a worst-case scenario because I look at civil rights, it's like, this is a utility issue, access to powers through the internet, are we supposed to provide that? Or should the government be providing that? You get what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
So this is an issue of, you know, we could put together a cost model on hotspots for how many families, but it's very expensive, and there hasn't been that work yet with either the state or the feds as to trying to come up with something that's much more reasonable and how we could do it, like the Essentials Program, which has also got a lot of strings attached. I mean, we've kicked this around, I've been on the phone with both executives at Verizon, who've been really helpful, I've been on the phone with executives at Comcast, they've been helpful as well, it's just, this is really hard for anyone to say, let's just make this happen, because it's, these are businesses.
Do you see the government stepping up to the plate?
At some point, I do, but you also got to remember, so I think it's like 36 communities in Massachusetts that still don't have the last mile of fiber optic into their, you know, it's mostly Hill towns in Franklin, Hamden, and Berkshire County, but the, all this is happening, and you hear the governor, Governor Baker, I think, has been an advocate for working with communities to make this possible. Because we've all realized now, what is the great divide, you know, is it poverty, or is it access? And it's a combination of both that hits us, right?
Yeah, thank you. With that, I yield.
Any further questions? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Ponce. Next item is a discussion and vote to approve restoration of contract speech and language service with full-time positions as presented by... No due exception. Full-time, as presented by Michael Loesch, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. Deb, was that a motion in a second?
I believe Mr. Hart made the motion, and Mr. Hettler seconded.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Loesch.
Yep, basically, very straightforward, once again, looking to reduce the amount of contracted services we have through Futures and replace with full-time employees through the district. We've noticed that really having our own speech and language and speech and language assistance that are a part of schools, that are full-time staff members, really serve our students in a more effective manner, and we've also seen cost savings, so we'd like to really convert. We're looking, I think, at the moment anywhere between four to seven positions for this school year, pending additional interviews.
Mr. Malone?
I just want to add, I know that, especially School Committee, Costa, I've been here four years, and this is an issue that you've brought to me several times. I'm happy to be here tonight to say to you that what we're proposing is a moving of funds from a contracted service line to an actual line that we think we can do better, cheaper, and as Mr. Lo said, provide better services. And what we promised to this committee, each year, what we've promised in our due diligence and work, is that we're going to bring forward really student-focused, student-centered proposals that help also the operations of the district. So we hope the school committee approves this, and that we can go forward and begin to attract some really good people.
Mr. Costa?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll be real brief and just say thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and I, you're right, we've had conversations, not just you and I, other members of the committee have been very supportive of looking at contracted services and looking to see if we can bring those services in-house with our own people. If we do a better job servicing our students in-house, and to the extent we can do it with special needs services or other services, I encourage you to keep bringing those back. So with that, I yield, thank you.
So in the document, it says to hire a speech-language pathologist, it would increase $744 over the current. Can you expound on that?
So for our current, with benefits and salary, we average that that might be the increased cost for an SLP, but really for our SLPAs, we are saving, you know, 10 to 12 times that amount.
So it says it would be an increase of 10, 744, so you're saying that the Futures contract, you've calculated out pension, health benefits, all that for 12 new employees, and you're telling me that it's 744?
Per speech-and-language pathologist.
So it's basically like $7,000. If 12 times 7, 100 is only...
Yeah, if we were hiring that many, but I mean, and what we're looking at for next year is potentially two to four speech-and-language pathologists, and then about four to six speech-and-language pathology assistants, which is where we see a lot of savings per the contract.
Yep. I'm not sure of that stuff, there's not enough data, but maybe you could send us that analysis to see?
Sure.
Why can't you do that now? That's what I was just trying to figure. I don't disagree with if you can hire, I've been on this committee years ago and recently, and you just can't hire the people, that's what we were told over and over. But we would always try, and then if you couldn't find them, we always had a backup plan. And what I'm reading here is almost, when you said subject to hiring and all that, isn't that the same thing? Like, what is different? Why do you need our vote right now to do anything different? My question.
I think this is the portion that this is going to be a full-time employee in conversion.
Right, you can't create positions without your approval.
But I thought they always existed.
No, it creates a line item just in contracted services. So we would, what we're asking you to do is take contracted services money, and because of the analysis, SLPs versus SLPAs, we can do it cheaper, we believe, by hiring seven. We have some good leads that we can go forward with. We're feeling pretty good that we can get some hires. Granted, things, you know, don't always work out the way we want, then we would just have to maintain the contracted services until we get to a point where we're not even using them anymore.
Yeah, so what does the contract say with Futures that needs to be changed? Is that, that's, I think the part of my...
It's not a contract we're changing, it's a line item in the budget that we have under contracted services, that we're saying, we're asking the committee to create new positions, move that money from contracted services to personnel, and then hire, fill those positions.
I mean, I don't disagree, and I'm just reading what it says here, restoration of contract speech and language service with full-time positions. I just don't, I mean, I'm going to support it because I think we're saying almost the same thing, but you're going to need Futures again, that's what part of me is saying to us. Why do I want to say to Futures, hey, we don't need you anymore, we're not going to have the people, and then are we risking our relationship with Futures is my only, and this comes from many years of people saying, meeting after meeting, but, and maybe I'm wrong that we didn't advertise, if we haven't advertised for our own people, shame on us, because we should be advertising every year, and if you don't get them, this is the fallback. So I'm not sure why this has to be here, but I think we're speaking the same thing, so I'm going to support it. This speech-language pathology assistance, I think, is something that has been adding more, that makes all the sense in the world. So, subject to the budget, we should, anybody that you can get, hire, I think we're going to need as many as we can. So I'm going to support it, but if you could just send any of that analysis, just curious to see the total with it. With that, I yield, thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael, I'm very pleased to see this plan on paper. I see a couple of items in here that really made me feel good. It's in the actual supporting of our schools internally, especially in the RTI process, and the connectivity that they're going to have, not only with your school psychologist, but with the teachers and the school adjustment counselors, in reference to all the work they're doing with their student caseload. And so there seems to be more of a holistic connectivity here. If they're ours, and they're consulting with classroom teachers on a more deep basis, because I know contracted service is what it looks like, they come in, they do... what it looks like, they come and they do their thing, totally professional, but there's no connectivity to the culture of the campus, or the school itself, or the people within the school. They come in and providing a service, and then they're exiting. But, but these would be our own people, and they would be connected socially and culturally to the school and the campus, is that correct?
Exactly, you know, I, we have a lot of great service providers through Futures, they're an excellent company, but you're right, a lot of them, you know, they come in, they clock in, they clock out, they're not a really integrated member of that school community, they're not participating in the PD, the meetings, and a lot of, you know, some of our more important processes, like, you know, the RTI, in order to reduce our amount of services district-wide, and get kids what they need upfront, is just not there. So this presents us an opportunity, like we said, the more, the more important aspect of this is better-serving students.
Will you be overseeing them, would they be, would they, you know, report to you, or, or a more immediate supervisor?
They'll be overseen by both us and the school directly. Our school, we kind of do a joint venture, really, you know, the school has the day-to-day, we have them from the, the department oversight as well.
Will there be an alignment process from school to school, principal to principal, on what their positions look like within their schools?
Certainly, you know, our, our SLPAs are very service-oriented, really, and really kind of meeting those needs. Our SLPs are more of our evaluation and supervision process, so we try and align as best we can. We are looking also really to get them increased in that RTI process as well.
One more question, will their role, as in their speech pathology role, would they also work sort of like on a therapeutic level with the students that they're working with, and consult accordingly with counselors and, and teachers on, on staff?
Sure, I mean, all of our, all of our service providers usually do provide a level of consult to all classrooms, and really collaboration with service providers, especially for a lot of our students, where that's a main component for them, like, a lot of our population at Henry Lord School. So, you know, that collaboration and consultation piece is going to be a given, pretty much, no matter what.
Thank you very much, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Josh?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Does anyone have any new business to come before the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion, the second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.[1786.41]